You can get it.
Call this meeting to order, November eighth, twenty twenty-two, Boards and Directors Study Session. Opening item, we need roll call.
Sure, Director Robert Echols.
Robert Uten.
Here.
Vice President Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
And Director Brett Echols.
Here.
Thank you.
Have we received any written public comment?
Mr. President.
And do we have any hand trays? So dismissing no public comment. First item is receiving filed the code enforcement officers report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. David Griffin is feeling under the weather today, so he is not here. So staff will do our best to answer any questions you may have, or we could just table this item and bring it back for next month.
Do the board have any questions on this item?
Just one question because I saw it actually in process, which was cool, but there was a, if you could just ask him, there was a neighbor that came out of, off of Eldon to deliver recyclables. While he was citing an individual who's notorious in that neighborhood. I'd just be curious. It just, it was weird statement in the report and I'm like, I didn't quite understand because I know who the neighbor is and. So I'd just be curious if you could. Expand on that. Thank you.
So you. You're going to bring the, the answer to the question or the whole report back?
I'm, I'm fine with just some, some email or.
Yeah, I could put in my weekly update to you.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Director Echols. The next item is proposed reorganization of solid waste department.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just really for your information, just for. Asking staff questions, discussion on, on this proposal. What staff is bringing forward this morning is, is the possibility of a reorganization, the solid waste department. Right now, as you know, it's really a one-person department. It's, and that, that department has the. All departments in, in the organization. And with SB thirteen eighty-three, it's going to require some additional responsibilities from this organizations and it just cannot be done by, by one person. So staff is recommending a reorganization that includes two new positions and two promotions. And I'll go a little bit about each first position that we're, we're suggesting is an office specialist, which is a full-time position. And this is a new position that would be in the department and this, this position will, will assist a lot of the administrative duties. In the department such as, as you see in, in the staff report, there's a big deal will be like answering customer service calls. Also assisting with pairing SB thirteen eighty-three ports to Cal recycle. Documenting and tracking liquidated damages issued by CNR and that's going to be really important because we want to make sure if we, you're going to apply liquidated damages, we must have. Good justifications and documentation. So that's very important. So. Those are just some of the duties. Again, more of those duties are described in your staff report. And then the other new position will be a part-time intern. And that position would be funded by the Cal recycle grant temporarily. And then if this, we believe this position works out well, then we would come back later requesting it to be a permanent part-time position.
I have a question.
That's like twenty hours a week. So it wouldn't be, you know, it's, it's part-time, wouldn't be eligible for any kind of benefits. But as you see in the staff report, again, it will assist in a lot of the administrative duties. For example, if additional assistant, customer service assistants. It'll help create a list of organics exempt homes. Conduct cart-to-cart outreach in high contaminant areas with CNR staff. Review solid waste policies and inconsistencies, update needed required, required for trial services. So again, that's, that's one of the, the new positions. And then the two promotions that we're recommending is promoting the code enforcement officer from a part-time position to a full-time position. And again, by making that, that person full-time. That, that position can assist with enforcing SB thirteen eighty-three regulations by lifting cart lids to observe discarded material. And also issue warning notices to SB thirteen eighty-three violators. Also issue ministry citations if needed. It also help resolve neighbor, neighbor disputes, also resolve any complaints about trash being missed. So the code enforcement officer could monitor the situation, see when that truck is going to be arriving. Yes, but, and then also scavenging. So then we can also expand scavenging activities through full-time. And then the, the, the other promotion will be the management analyst one to management analyst two. And that's because this position would be supervising those three positions and a management analyst one is not a supervisory position. So you'd have to promote that position to a two. So it would take on supervisory responsibilities. But again, that would pretty much be administering the department. And again, more descriptions in the position, details of the, the work details are described in your staff report. Most notably, this position would be special events coordinators like our shredding events, our compost giveaways, our alkaline battery cycling program.
I have a question.
Establish good relations with CNR and represent CMSD as a point of contact for CNR. Ensures SB thirteen thirty compliance. Create new and innovative programs to help achieve seven-five percent diversions. So those are some of the, the duties listed for the management analysts too. What's this going to cost us? Right? I'm sure you're wondering what's that going to cost us? So in, in your staff report, we're estimating it's going to cost a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars a year, additional hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars a year. Now, we believe this, this money could be funded internally without any rate adjustment based on current trends we're seeing. As you see in their staff report, what now we're seeing a decrease in our tonnage for organics and on the mixed waste side. Don't know why. Can't, I can't really give any explanations. You may be CNR can do better job than I can. But I really don't know why that is. But it is trending downward. And so we would like to continue monitoring that. That's why we're just asking for questions and comments today. And if the, the tonnage is trending, continue to trend, trend downward, then we would come back in March with a recommendation. To approve the reorganizations with implementation beginning in, in April of this year. And if that was the case, if the board approves it in April, then there would be an additional fifty-four thousand dollars to the budget that can be absorbed in the existing budget because we're saving those expenditures from. The reduced trash tonnage and organic tonnage. So that's my, that's our staff reports. Happy to answer any questions you may have. And again, this is just for your information and we're just going to get your input. Do you think we're going in the right directions? Get your feedback, questions, discussions. So we're here.
When you're having them come aboard the two positions, will you be bringing them to us so that we can meet them?
Yes, yes. We try to do that all, no police.
Okay, that's, it's good to see who, who they are.
A couple of questions. One, I thought CNR, CRNR was going to be checking the trash cans, not our personnel.
They will do most of it, yes, but every time we won't, we want to tag along, see how they're performing, how they perform that service. So that's where the intern would come in and, and assist.
Now, would these promotions require them to be here five days a week and not work at home?
No, well, the, the management analysts two could probably, I, I believe could still do the. Telecommuting and then the office specialist would probably right off the bat, we would have that person start off five days a week, just so that person get. Comfortable with our, our, our culture or the way we do business. And if that position can work. From home a, a day or two, then we will allow that position to do so.
I'm, I'm just concerned about the persons can be positioned to that they're working at home. Questions here.
Well, we still, again, when we're working from home, we get, we, we still get our emails and that's when we always recommend the public to, to use our gov outreach because we get that twenty-four seven. So she will still get that or the person will get that at home. Any kind of phone calls, we, we would. We get those, we have someone here five days a week answering phones. So if it's to, that person would have. Their lines forwarded to their cell phones when they're at home. So they get those calls.
That's the big opposition I have.
Yes, they, they still get the calls at home.
No, but I'm saying it'd be better to have them here handling things personally. I mean, that's my opposition to that.
Thank you, Mr. President. So. What do we do when the money runs out and the term runs out on the intern?
That's what I'm saying. We would like to come back later, maybe next fiscal year or two, fund that position in, in this solid waste budget.
Okay. Out of curiosity, why wouldn't we just do it now with a full-time position instead of the intern?
You're saying, don't do the intern, just have a, just have the full-time position?
I'm just, yeah, I'm asking, has that been considered?
It, it has, but we, we can, we can look in that. I think having the intern and funding by the, by the Cal grant, it will give us a good idea if this position is, is even. If it's kind of like a test trial.
Okay. Because in, if went forward with this plan ultimately, and at the end of the six months, nine, whatever it is for the intern. Could conceivably be like, eh, we're good with what we got. We don't need to create another position. My, I mean.
The intern position, yes.
Okay, okay. And then the. This year's budget or this year's, or this cycle's to your budget, you're, you're saying right now it's trending, we can absorb this buck eighty and change?
If it's trending the way it is now, yes, we believe it could be. Yes. That's why we want, we want to wait to see if you, a few more months, see if it's trending downward.
Okay, and then. But if it doesn't, we're going to have to do a budget adjustment then.
Budget adjustment, or if we can't afford it, then we have to come back and recommend a rate increase.
And what, what's the, I mean, I know the one eighty and change now, but. If I missed, I apologize. What's the ongoing cost with everything over the next two, three, four, or five years?
But with, with the.
With all these positions.
We have, we have not done that. We can, we can come back to you later for that, but we, we can do a long-term projection on that.
Yeah, I would definitely like to see that because that. I mean, let's say our budget this year can accept it. I don't know. If it's going to double, triple in cost in years to come, which salaries and pers and all that stuff inevitably does. We're going to have to make some decisions up here budgetary wise, so. And so at this point though, so this is going to be brought back to us in twenty twenty-three. And what's, what's the lag between now and then? What are we looking at?
Lack, you mean?
I mean, I'm just saying, why wouldn't we look at this in a month from now or something?
Could we, could we want, we want more data. We want, we want to see the, the data. So it'll give us at least, you know, five months worth more of a data to see if, if it's trending downward.
Okay, because I mean thirteen eighty-three also, I mean, hasn't been fully. Washed out either. So there's a, there's a lot we don't know and, and won't experience for a while. So, okay, I'm generally, I like the. Let's, let's look more into it, but in sometime between now and then, I would like to see the long-term cost of this and all that. So, thank you, Scott.
Yeah, Scott, a couple of just reporting. So let's talk about the. The movement with the code enforcement officer. He works part-time as code enforcement now and then part-time as maintenance. What do you do with the maintenance if you're promoting?
There's a couple of options. We, we've been keeping a list of potential contractors to contract that out. The problem with that position, it is extremely hard to find a qualified person like David. Even before we found David, we were going through a lot of employees. We just couldn't find the right fit, the right person does their job. So I think that's going to be challenged. So that's why we, we're going to have the list of contractors in our back pocket as, as a, as a possible how to fill that position.
So those contractors would be essentially people that would come in after hours and clean the place.
Right, or, or during, or, you know, it could happen during, during regular business hours, you know, cleaning, you know, the, the restrooms and kitchen and stuff like that, like, like David does right now.
My other thought. In terms of. I don't have a problem with, with what you're doing here and planning, and I think it's time that solid waste. Does have some more resource for it. The thing with code enforcement, and when you look at what you're talking about doing with him, especially with the thirteen eighty-three things and everything. I'd like you to take a look at moving that promotion up sooner than later.
Yeah.
I, I, I think having our eyes on the ground when it comes to some of the stuff that we're going to have to work with CRNR on. And with, you know, the advent of the thirteen eighty-three. Stuff, regulations. I, I think having David, if, if it's David, you know. Full-time now doing the prep work as we get closer to this rollout makes some sense to me. So. I'd like to see that as kind of a separate. Part of that. The rest of your plan is fine coming back in March or whenever you want to do it, but I think we need to take a look maybe at moving that component of it a little quicker.
There just had to be some coordination on that because if, if we promote him sooner, then we got to try to find some in the backfield for the facility maintenance and.
That's why I asked about the maintenance part of it. Yeah. Okay. The other que- question I have is when you talk about an intern and the. The new position. Where do you recruit those people? Where do, where are you going to find those people?
Or we're recruiting right now internships where we're coming from the colleges.
Yeah, okay.
We've got a couple of interviews lined up right now, so.
Okay, but you're looking obviously for people who have some sort of. Experience in this field.
Not necessarily because an intern is, you, you're, you're, your objective is really to get more experience in the field. So we're looking for, for college students who, who are studying environmental science, environmental studies. Who, who is really passionate about sustainability, you know, so we're looking for those type of students who want to, that's the kind of career they want to get into. And so we're, we're trying to actively recruit at all the colleges, OCC, Vanguard, Cal State Fullerton, all UCI, all those, all the Orange County colleges. We're recruiting and, and, and I have to say, we got almost a dozen applicants.
That's good.
So I think we're down to a, a few to interview, so.
Just make sure you pick a Titan and not one of these other people. Okay. That's someone from Cal State Fullerton instead of Long Beach State would be really nice. Es- Esker was writing notes. He didn't hear my. Yeah, you did hear it. Anyway, that, that's being facetious, but I like that the environmental side, I think those are the people we need to look for. Okay, thanks.
I like the concept. I think it's way overdue. The intern. You, 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 you're, you're proposing to budget for an intern in the future. And you said that was going to be money from the grant program, but you're, you're, you're interviewing or you're going to potentially interview for. An intern position now, which will expend that grant money. It won't be available necessarily. Well, I, it, it's just a timing process.
Yeah, it, it depends how many hours they, you know, that, that interval works. Again, it can't really, employee can't work more than a thousand hours a year. If it goes over a thousand hours, then there are all sorts of benefits. So it has, we have, we have to make sure we monitor that position is less than a thousand hours. So that, you know, and of course, we have to be flexible with a personal schedule, schedule. So. Yes, so. As Director Echols pointed out, if, if we feel that the internship is a, a viable solution or viable. Answer to us to help with our administrative stuff, then, then I would come back to the board at, at the budget review and recommend this position be a part, or permanent part-time position.
The grant, the grant is written that we're going to use, use that money for an intern. Is that changeable? So that like Director Echols was talking about, could that money be used to fund? A potential new person?
Potential what? I'm sorry.
The potential second person. You're going to do an analyst two.
The office specialist, I mean, or?
Yeah, the office specialist or whatever they're called.
We would have to submit an amendment to Cal recycle justifying that because everything we've already gave them a detailed expenditures of how we're going to spend that money. And so if we're going to move the money around, then we got to tell them, okay, if we're going to move it to fund this position, this is what we're giving up.
That's possible.
It's possible, but we still have to go through some channels to get it done.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one follow-up again. Been a while since I've applied for grants, but. To, to follow up on President Newton's and then as I'm thinking. Whether it's code enforcement or whatever the position is, is there a grant out there that we can just apply for a SB thirteen eighty-three? Full-time specialist as an employee?
That would, that'd probably eat up the entire budget of our, of our grant funds.
Okay.
So again, we have a lot of, a lot of programs designated outreach, outreach is going to be huge these next few years. A lot of money and grant money on outreach.
Okay, just some, yeah, I mean. Every once in a while, when you apply for, yeah, you guys know. There's a little bit of money that we haven't even noticed. So just might be curious, like any one of those positions, you could almost classify as a thirteen eighty-three specialist in many different ways. So just something to look more into. Thank you.
Scott, is there a deadline to spend the money?
Yes, yes.
Then what do you have to spend it by?
I think within two years.
We're okay for it.
Yes.
Well, thirteen eighty-three is fast approaching when, when, when major actions have to take place. So I. The law was enacted in twenty sixteen and. And we're looking at needing help and we're just looking at a plan to get help. So I think it's way overdue, but. And I, and I would. I'm not sure why we need to wait. You know, we, we saved about seven hundred thousand dollars last year. We had budgeted for a four hundred thousand dollar deficit that needed to come out of reserves and. And we, we actually ended up with revenues of three or four hundred thousand dollars. So that's about a seven hundred thousand dollar swing in, in the reserves alone. Because of, because of what you said earlier, the trash tonnage has gone down. You know, I walked the precincts. I've walked them probably for the last four or five years and I pay attention to. What's going on with the, the lawns because, because I have a zero escape lawn. This year, I'm amazed at how many lawns are not being watered because of the drought. How many lawns have been converted to artificial turf and how many lawns have been converted to. Zero escape lawns. And this year, because of the drought, I think it. It has, in my opinion, has seen a substantial increase. So the organic tonnage is not going to go down. I mean, not going to go up. It's going to continue to go down. And that's been the case for the last. Several years. The only reason the total tonnage went up was because of the pandemic. And I think staff's conclusion was people are home, they're cleaning out their garage, they're cleaning out their yards. And, and so the tonnage went up. And that has an impact on, on, on the next item that we're going to talk about. Anyway. I'm, I'm supportive of doing this as, as soon as possible. I think it's probably good idea to, to begin to think about implementing it in April because that'll be. Into the next budget year before we started having to expend the costs for those people. And, and we'll have a lot of time to talk about it between now and then. So. Any, any further comment from the directors? If not, thank you for the. Very long and interesting report. We'll go on to the next item, which is the proposed thirteen eighty-three compliance. Post-Amazon compliance.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this was actually a request by the board to bring this item back for discussion. The board wanted to know how does CRNR. Justify their rates? What kind of assumptions do they use when they come up with proposed rates? So staff has met with CRNR and we got the staff report for you. I'm going to, I'm going to. Boozman and she's going to give you a little more description of how CRNR develops their rates. So.
Good morning, President Newton, members of the board.
Nobela.
Good morning. Can you guys hear me?
It doesn't look like you're muted, but we can't hear you.
Can you guys hear me now?
I can hear you, Nobela, but I'm not sure if the audio in the boardroom is picking you up.
Okay. Can you guys hear me now?
Yeah, but I can't want to buy that. I like the idea. He's going to do everything. I know. Under oral communication.
Yeah.
Can we hear Alan? This is just double check.
Alan, can we hear you?
Alan, you're muted.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Speak, Alan, speak.
Alan, I can hear. We continue to have a problem.
Nobela, you might need to go into the boardroom to present for.
Hello?
President, can you hear us?
Scott, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I'll go ahead and start. So sorry about that technology. Yeah, it's good and the bad with technology, right? So, okay.
Yeah, I think that was on his microphone.
Okay, so, so since two thousand and fifteen, the, the district has operated, you know, a two-card system. Paying CNR their collection services on a per-tonnage basis, which means it's a, we pay a true cost every month of the collection of the waste from our, our trash customers. Basically, so as you know. It, we, we, the board approves a tonnage rate for mixed waste, which is right now fifty-six dollars, fifty-two cents. And a tonnage rate for organics recycling, which now is seventy-seven dollars, seventy-seven cents. So the cost for, for the mixed waste and the organics can go up if the tonnage goes up and it can go down if the tonnage goes down, right? It's, it's, it's that fluctuate, fluctuate, it fluctuates. And then the second component of our rate is an occupancy, occupancy fee rate, which is the flat rate per month. It's that, it's ten dollars. Sixty-five cents, a little, a little less than ten dollars sixty-five cents. And that's charged per home. So every, every home that CNR goes and picks up the carts, it's charged that flat rate. And we have over twenty-three thousand homes. So that's basically how we pay for our, our solid waste operations. Now for CNR to determine their rate for the new agreement, the new. They look at the actual volume collected and disposed of previous years. So they looked at historical data. And then the rate calculations are based on, like I said, historical tonnage. And then CNR determines anticipated productivity per week. At CNR's current cost per hour to operate. So they determine how much, they look at previous data of what they collected. And they look at what, what's costing them to process that. And then they take that, that cost per hour and they, and they calculate based on the tonnage they, they believe is going to accumulate here and see, and at CMSD to get their, get their rate. As you see, it's, it's kind of broken down on, on the staff report. So the fourteen ninety-six cost per home for operating truck inserts is one trash cart, one recycling cart and two organic carts. So they estimate five dollars, twenty cents trash cart, four eighty-eight recycling cart and four eighty-eight or two organic carts. And they base this and they, and they determine this by, they believe CNR can service ninety-four trash carts per hour. With each, with each black cart disposing about thirty-nine point two pounds of trash per week. And then for recycling, they believe they can collect a little more carts, like a hundred carts because the volume is less, all right? So the volume is less, that means it takes less time for the truck to fill up. So they can service more homes. They're, they believe they can service a hundred, hundred blue carts within the hour. Based on estimating about seventeen and a half pounds per cart per week. And that's where they came up with their cost. So overall, that, that's how they, in a nutshell, that's how they come up with their rates. If you want some more, more details, CNR is here to answer any questions, but that's basically how they develop those rates. So we're, again, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Director Echols.
Thank you, Mr. President. So a couple of questions. How, what we pay right now on the tonnage basis, is there a way to show that versus this new flat rate, any sort of way to compare the two? Or am I reaching?
Yes, we can definitely calculate what our monthly rate will be based on the tonnage. We can calculate that and compare that with a flat rate. Sure.
I would love to see that. It's like, that way we could, hey, we're making the right call to go to a flat rate versus a tonnage. And I'm sure we are. It's just nice to see the numbers to justify.
I can, I can tell you what those rates are.
I'll forget by tonight.
Basically, C N R has calculated it based on, um, a rate of, um, forty, nearly forty-four thousand tons per year and we're presently at thirty-nine thousand. So it's about a seven hundred thousand dollar difference. If we go to the flat rate versus wh- what we're presently experiencing. Now, we're in the middle of a drought. And, um, but, and then, and that's my objection also is, well, I have many, I have several objections, but.
But, yeah, so.
Yeah.
I appreciate your, your knowledge, but yeah, maybe in next time we could take a look at that. And then, uh, if I remember from the last session, if we went to, or go into a flat rate, we're one of the few that only, that is currently on a tonnage or do I have that backwards? The only ones that do it. Okay, gotcha. And then, um, when would the, and so how does this rate compare to neighboring Orange County districts and cities?
Very competitive. It's, it's, um, it's right in the middle, I would say. It's very competitive.
Okay. And does this factor into our deal? And very well could have. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, I'll, I'll go back and look myself, but if it wasn't, if, just kind of give me a basic chart. And then, um, being that the three cart has been pushed off, uh, when would this rate apply?
It, it would apply, uh, when the program is, is, again, which we were in the fall of twenty twenty-four.
Fall, so, okay. So between, so basically all of twenty twenty-three, we're going to continue on the same per-tonnage deal.
Remember, we, we, the board adopted a, a five-year rate plan. We're still in that five-year plan, so we'll, we'll implement those, those rates.
Oh, the, the, that five-year plan was what we're charging our customers, not what C R R and R is. Okay. So for twenty twenty-three, for all intents purposes, everything stays the same in terms of what we're being charged by them and.
Board approved in a Prop two eighteen hearing several years ago. Yes.
No, I understand that rate, but this rate.
This rate will go, if the board approves the contract, this rate will go into effect in, in the fall of twenty twenty-four. What month? I don't know exactly. We'll have to wait determining when we're going to start rolling out the carts. Um, and I guess would, would it be, would it be January first, twenty twenty-five? Yeah, yeah, so.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at. If we're going to pay the per-rate for three carts, I want to make sure we have three carts before that rate. So as long as that's out there, okay. Um, and then, uh, okay, that's, that's all I have for the minute.
I have a couple of other, um, inputs. If, if we approve the flat rate, do the two guaranteed rates that we have in our present contract, are they meaningless? The organics rate?
Yes, they, they, the, the tonnage rates go away. So we're going to just go based on a flat rate. So.
So, so getting the best organic rate, uh, goes away.
Well, no, I'm sorry. Oh, correct. Okay, so we're saying, yes, we, we're still, that's still in the contract. So that, the, the lowest organic rate should still be calculated in their, in their flat rate.
It's calculated in their flat rates, but it doesn't make any difference whether it's calculated or not because it's, the flat rate is what it is. Uh, also, we're also in the contract guaranteed to be in the, uh, what they call the net hauler rate. So that will go away with this flat rate.
It stays in there. Net hauler rate.
She said one thing and you said the opposite.
No, she said the same thing.
Did agree to keep the district at the ten percent, um, average, higher low of the net hauler rate of all cities in Orange County. So that remains. The exact language is in the, in the amended contract.
Okay. Um, you know, I, I'd like, Director Echols need a lot more explanation for this. I was the one that asked for uh, this, this rate to be explained. We're presently in a, um, we're, we're presently seeing, as you mentioned earlier, Scott, significant decreases in tonnage. And I don't believe the organic tonnage comeback. I believe, um, May- Mesa will be out there lobbying for, uh, with water conservation as long as the drought is in effect. It doesn't make any difference what Mesa asks for. Uh, the residents are taking it in their own hands and substantially decreasing the organics content. The only reason that the, um, that the, uh, mixed waste cart tonnage increased as, as staff has told us is that it was during the pandemic and people were home and people cleaned out their garages and cleaned out whatever. And so the tonnage went back up. We're at historic lows for tonnage. Um, and then, and then, and this rate is ten percent higher than what we experienced last year and what I project that we'll experience this year. So it's seven hundred thousand dollar uh, difference in costs. Um, and unless I can get that better understood, I'm not in favor at all of this flat rate.
And. But there's going to be additional truck that's going to be going out to pick up the recyclables. That's the cost for them also.
It is a cost to them, yes.
And, and, but we don't know what the tonnage is going to be from the recyclables.
They, 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 but they've calculated a cost to pick up that, um, recyclable cart.
That's what, that's why the rate is what it is.
Well, that's part of why, that's part of why it is what it is. Uh, so we're going to be paying, we, we are going to be paying for increased organic tonnage. I mean, recycle, recyclable cart tonnage. True. But they're going to charge us for that irrespective of whether we go to the flat, irrespective of whether we go to the flat rate or we have a tonnage cost.
And then, so yeah, I definitely want to see how this compares to what we're doing right now to this proposal. Some sort of comparison.
Yeah.
And then how this net to hauler rate, you know, we're in the whatever, ten percent of everyone else. And so I'm assuming that this is within ten, I'm just assuming what, okay. Now, how, how long does, and this is a fixed rate for the life of the contract barring any COLA increases, correct? Okay.
COLA and just, which includes the disposal increases that get passed to us from, uh, County of Orange.
Got it. Okay, so it is a fixed rate for, call it ten years, uh, minus any COLA and like I said, okay.
I do, as I was sitting there, I, in about how does this, uh, compare to what we do today? And, um, Scott, this might trigger for you. I believe the current rate, because we looked at that, what, what you, what your current rate is to do today, if you trans- transpose it into a monthly rate, it's twenty dollars and six cents. I think that was what, that's kind of what it comes out to. If you were to put your current cost per ton for organics, reci-, I'm sorry, mixed waste and then our service fee, I believe that rate's twenty oh six per month today. So again, as was discussed, when you go to the twenty-four sixteen, that's the assumption of also putting that extra truck. Because no matter what, even if the volume isn't very heavy, we still have to drive by twenty-three thousand homes every week to make, to pick up that cart.
Yeah. One, one last thing that I am concerned about uh, with the flat rate is the RENA projections. Post Mesa is projected to have to have ten thousand units by twenty thirty. Uh, that's ADUs, single-family homes, uh, small fourplexes, which, which is in our contract and multifamily homes. I don't know what the percentage of those, what, what, if anybody's made any, if the city's made any estimate of what that is. But let's say it's fifty percent. So fifty percent increase in occupancy would mean this is a thirty-six dollar rate.
Oh, sure, son.
It's, well, it's char-, it'll be not a, not a rate, but and then a fifty percent increase in cost.
Right.
So I need, like Director Echols, we need to have somebody's estimate of what the ADUs are. ADUs won't produce more trash, they'll produce less. Multifamily homes on a single-family ho-, on a single-family lot will produce substantially less trash, um, per unit. And, um, single-family homes, uh, you know, that I don't know where they're going to put them, but somebody's made some guesses as to how many of each of these types of things, the mul-, the, the big multifamily homes, uh, we don't, you know, we don't cert-, we're not responsible for.
Where do you, where do you, I'm confused on this fifty percent and the fifty, the rate will change by fifty percent.
No, the rate, I, I said that incorrectly. The cost will change by fifty percent if you get, if, if five thousand of those new units are ADUs, single-family homes and whatever, it's this flat rate is based on the number of residences that they service. So an ADU is the second, the second unit that has to be serviced.
I'm, I'm not sure I buy that. I'm not sure I buy that whole, what you're saying. And, you know, based on what I'm hearing through O C O G and through some of the other committees that I have to listen to, the, with, with the RENA allocations and what H C D is, is proposing is ADUs are going to be minimal. I don't, I don't think you're going to see that as, it's a huge impact.
True.
Single families are probably the last thing on the list.
Yep.
I mean, when you look at what cities are projecting and what, it, let's talk about one metro over by my house.
Yeah.
That is not a single-family complex.
That's a multifamily.
So in order to meet these RENA allocations, we're going to see more and more multifamily situations, whether they be condos or, or whatever, because they're more affordable that way. And that's what RENA is supposed to do is make it more affordable. So the, the impact to us is going to be, I think, much less. So, so I'm.
Uh, that's what I want to see is.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I understand that. But what I'm, what I'm saying is this rate's not going to change by fifty percent.
The rate is, I said that incorrectly. The cost is going to be changed by fifty percent. So if we have fifty, so if we have.
I'm still not there. It's okay, it's okay.
If we have twenty-five percent more residences that they have to serve, the cost will go up. If the flat rate stays the same, it's based on per residence.
Okay.
If we have twenty-five percent more residences that they have to serve.
Okay.
The cost will be going up twenty-five percent.
But won't each of those twenty-five percent still get charged twenty-four dollars and sixteen cents?
Yes.
So how does the rate go up?
The rate, wait a minute.
When you put it out.
It's not the rate, it's the cost.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, I got you.
Yeah, I said it wrong.
I, I, I'm not sure the cost would go up because you're still filtering it out amongst, I mean, you're, instead of taking ten people. Okay, I, I.
So if you build an ADU on the back of your yard, you're not.
You're not mov-, you're not moving in if I. It ain't gonna happen.
I hope that I don't have to.
Personally, again, based on what I hear from these city reps and these people on O C O G, ADUs are not the thing. It's multi-fa-, it's going to be multifamily.
Yes.
Complexes.
All I want to know is.
Having our purview anyways, so.
Well, if SCAG has those numbers for Post Mesa, I'd like to see them.
I think SCAG's got, I think SCAG makes up their own numbers for everybody anyway, so it doesn't, you know. But I, I don't know, maybe I'm off-base with this, but I, with you guys, what you're projecting, aren't you looking at multifamily more than anything else?
That's what we're seeing. That's what we're seeing in more cities. And I will address, we have several cities that have a lot of ADUs and it's hit and miss. Um, I think it's up to the homeowner, what they want to do. They might say, just use our trash cans. It's up to them to say, you have to sign up for your own trash service. You're not using mine. They may say, just use mine and I'm going to pay for an extra trash cart. Because that is part of the contract. They can get, so if they have an ADU in the back, that, that resident could say, okay, I'm going to get an extra trash and recycle cart. And they can use our organics cart. It's whatever the resident chooses to use, so.
We, we didn't use, we didn't use to call them ADUs. Remember what we used to call them? Granny flats.
How, how, how do you, how do you treat that in, so they, so they build an ADU? Uh, do you treat that as an extra resident, an extra, extra residence solely based on what the, you know, the guy in front who built the thing?
Most of it's by parcel address. They typically wouldn't have a new parcel. So it'd be still one parcel with an ADU on the parcel. So they only get billed the one flat fee. If they said, hey, we want our tenant or whoever's moving in to get their own trash service, um, we have, there's a lot in Newport. So just say the address is two sixteen Newport, it would be two sixteen point five. And so you know that the point five is the ADU, but again, it's up to the property owner for them to decide.
It, it, it is up to the property owner to, to reassign the parcel. They can actually ask to have it.
Correct.
Turned into an independent parcel, which would then trigger a, a new unit or a new, a new, uh, charge to us.
What was that guy in here recently complaining about us not charging for the ADU?
Yeah, he, he had, it was an appeal process, yeah.
Yeah, but, and, you know, did he have trash, so the ADU had trash carts?
They had their own trash carts, correct?
Well, I mean, you know, like Julie said, it's, it's six of one, half dozen of the other. So all I want is some wild-ass guesses.
And, and one, yeah. And one request is we're looking at those, that more information. Let's not use the COVID years that we all agreed, that is such a weird deal, that tonnage went up and all this craziness.
Thirty percent increase nationwide.
Yeah, so if we could look more like point sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, whatever, like, let's use some real data and then obviously, no matter what, we're going to have to forecast for some growth, whether it's an ADU, a multifamily, blah, 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 blah. It's coming and we've also got that K thing going on. I mean, there's so much that we don't know that K is going to either delay all this or in, in, who knows? So, you know.
Uh, I, I went to the Waco meeting on the last Friday and that's one of the last presentations or statements that she made was the state is backing off the requirements of, a bit from their, for the housing. So that, that's new to me and I thought that could affect that also.
Yes.
Did you, did you attend that meeting also? Remember she?
No, but I've heard, but I've heard that said.
Yeah, that's, that's happened.
Um, I suspect they will.
H C D is getting a lot of pushback from just about every, I, I mean, look at what Newport Beach is doing to H C D. I mean, they're, they're firing with all guns. So I think H C D, depending on what happens today.
Yes.
Uh, you know, I think H C D might, it may trigger some changes in, in, in their RENA stuff and.
I know.
So.
Well, that's.
But we need to be, we need to be ready for the way it's going and, and if we have to look at this and we need more information, I'm okay.
Well, Julie, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thanks for giving him the right language to use. Still not moving into my ADU.
She got me excited. That's reading that said rates rather than cost.
It's probably not the right thing to say.
Nobela's thankful her thing didn't work, her Zoom didn't work.
Yeah. Um.
So we're, what, what are we doing now? Are we coming back with these?
Well, we.
Yeah, I'm hearing that more, wants more information, so we'll, we'll bring that back.
Can you also, as you, as you do these comparisons, you know, part of our negotiation with C R N R is, is regarding COLA? Can you pop in some numbers on what a five percent COLA would look like if we agree to that in the contract? Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much for your diligence. My computer got excited and turned off.
Missed trash pickups.
Oh. Uh, item number four is twenty twenty-two missed trash pickup.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is your, uh, monthly standard report, uh, updating the board on how many, uh, units have been missed, uh, during the month. So this, as you see, is from, uh, January through October of this year. In October, um, in fact, can you put up the bar chart? So we'll put the bar chart here and here you go. Um, so you'll see in October, we had, uh, eighty-one complaints about their, their carts um, being missed under regularly scheduled collection day, uh, which is, uh, a decrease of nearly half from, from last month. As I think you mentioned, as you were told, I think the last board meeting, uh, on the, um, west side of the community, there was a, um, as you said, disgruntled driver that had to be replaced. So we think that was part of the reason why we're seeing some of the, the large, or some of the complaints. Um, that driver has been replaced with another driver, so hopefully we'll see those numbers go down to, uh, further. But, uh, this is your, uh, again, your, your monthly report and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Um.
I'm sorry, I said the west side, I meant the east side.
I was gonna, yeah, I was. I was gonna, yeah, I thought it was the east side, but, um, I mean. I don't want to see anyone lose their job, but it sounds like it was necessary, but I doubt we can attribute it all to one driver. May, I don't know, we'll see going forward. But my main question is eighty-one, that would or would not trigger a, uh. Uh, liquidated damages under the new contract.
I believe it would.
Would. Is that mark eighty?
That's twenty-four, yeah.
Okay.
That's close, yeah.
Cl- right, right about there. Okay. All right. Is there anything else that contributed? I mean, still high, but at least it went down from the previous month. Is there anything we know about just? Luck?
It, it's.
In fact, you'd ask.
Why it went down though?
You, you'd ask for some historical data.
Right. Oh, yeah, exactly.
Some pre-pandemic data.
At some point, I would like to see pre-pandemic.
Um, I did, I, I sent that to your last, in your weekly update. I did.
Did you? I'll double check. I apologize then.
Oh, I give it was, uh. It was seventeen, eighteen data.
Okay. I'll double check. Thank you.
I think they attribute to this, we had some changes, obviously with the driver replacement, uh, we made a change to our route manager. Uh, we have a new route manager that's overseeing the routes. And again, the two new trucks are on the road. So we had a, a substantial reduced amount of breakdowns. And so we knew, have the two new trucks that are out there on the street. So I think that helped as well. So I hope to see that huge trend continue. Um, as you could see in the previous months, looked better, some roller coasters, but hopefully it'll keep going down.
That, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Oh, the historical data is on the chart.
Again, I don't count COVID.
Oh, COVID. Oh, so you, yeah, yeah, I think your question was, and mine also is pre-COVID data.
And I think it's good to, uh, there's no, there's no such thing as zero missed collections. We're going to have some, right? But we, we, we accept that. Even if you look at the eighty-one missed collections, um, last month, you put in the perspective, that's less than a half percent of the entire. Community that we service, twenty-three of twenty, um, twenty-three thousand, almost twenty-three thousand, one hundred units we serve, less than a half percent. Granted, I know that eighty-one's, it's not the number you like, but look at the big picture. It's, it's, it's still small.
And, uh, agree, when you look at the big, for sure. But if we were at only twenty.
Yes.
Then that's a big deal.
I agree.
If I could, if I go to a rape pair and go, hey, well, it's only one percent. Well, yeah, well, I'm, my house is continually getting missed. That makes me upset. But if I say, hey, you know, eighty has been the same for the last ten years, okay, but I don't think it has. So then we, that's why I just want.
Yeah, and that's, I, I just want to make that point. Uh, we, we are still working with, you know, to get, to get those numbers down. We, we do believe they're still high. But again, you just put in perspective the big picture.
Right. Great. Thank you.
Any more questions on this topic? If not, we'll go to, um, um, Eldon Force Main redundancy plans.
Mark Esker, our district engineer will be giving this report.
Well, good morning, everybody. Um, today we're here to review the Eldon Force Main project. I guess what I'm going to do is ask you to consider my presentation this morning. Uh, I'd like to discuss the project with you in some detail. And then, um. Review our proposal to implement the plan and then ask questions. Let's have a, let's have a dialogue. And I guess ultimately, uh, we'd like to obtain your feedback and get direction for how we should proceed with this project. I guess to me, I'm going to say that, um. This is a very big project. I, as you well read in the, in the, uh, report, it involves a big outlay of funding. But I think if we have any risk in our organization and our sewer system, right now, the Eldon is probably where I think we're at most risk. And we potentially have the biggest impact should something go wrong with, with the project. Um, I, I will say that I'm going to focus on, you've heard a lot, you've heard me discuss in. Redundancy project, uh, implementing a redundant force main system. So I want to focus on a short-term plan to really talk about emergency overland bypass pumping and, and discuss what that is, why we're considering it. And, and tie that into how we want to proceed with the project. Next slide. Again, I want to focus on, uh, our overland bypass plan, but just to remind the board. Our goal is basically to protect the public health and the environment. And we're looking to, I guess, upgrade the Eldon bypass emergency plan to consider longer-term force main outages. I'll explain that as we go forward. Uh, we'd like to purchase some equipment to provide for pumping overland to a gravity discharge manhole over by the fairgrounds. Uh, which is a big deal and, and we'll talk quite a bit about that. And then the third item, which is a, I guess, a longer-term implementation plan, and that would be to build the redundant force main system. Uh, it's essentially would be two, uh, force mains that you could, you would, we would switch back and forth. Or if we have an issue with one, somebody damages it, we just switch over to the next one. And in fact, you probably saw in the paper. That over the, I think it was Friday night or Saturday morning, not sure which, Orange County sanitation had a leak of their force main over at the Lido pump station, which is down by the Newport Bay. Uh, because they had dual force main, they were able to switch over and that, that immediately shut off the. The sanitary sewer overflow that was occurring from that location. And as a result, I believe they actually significantly decreased. Uh, what they were putting into the Newport Harbor. Next slide. Um, I guess the biggest thing that I want to point out is that the, uh, regional, well, the wa- the state water board and then the regional water boards. They're all pushing to have us consider resiliency. Basically, they want us to consider earthquakes, bigger rainstorms, among other, other items. And so just as a refresher, I'm not, I don't, I'm not sure that we're going to have earthquakes like this to where bridges are significantly damaged. But it might be damaged enough during a major quake on the, um, Newport Inglewood Fault or possibly, uh, the fault that runs up and down California. That we might have, uh, uh, enough of a, of a earthquake that we damage our force main as it goes through the. Uh, Mesa State Route fifty-five Mesa Overpass Bridge. Um, I also have some, some concerns with ability to perform maintenance, uh, assess the condition of our pipeline. And then I'll say even do future refurbishments. Uh, and I'll talk a little bit about that and answer your questions. Um, I think capacity to handle outages, uh, since my ten, short tenure here, we've had a couple of line breaks. I've seen some corrosion damage. Um, I've seen contractors Edison put a, a, um, power pole right through our. Eight-inch sewer one day. Now granted, it's not our force main, but, um, you know, we, there's always potential to have something go wrong. And when you have one force main or one pipe, to me, it, it introduces risk. And that's what I wanted to share with our board of directors and the public. And then the last thing is, we need to ensure that readiness of our sewer pipe to, because. The ru- water boards and the regional boards, they, they really don't care if we have one pipe. They just don't want sewer period out in the, in the public and, 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 uh, in our environment. Next slide. Um, when did this, when did I have some concerns? And I discussed this with our general manager, and I think he understands my concerns now. But about a year or so ago, this agency decided that we were going to remove the air release valve from the, uh, Eldon Force Main within the Mesa Bridge. Uh, the contractor, uh, bid about a hundred thousand dollar contract to do that removal. And what I was learning during the construction activities and out there that evening was that only about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars was actually to remove the valve, go into the bridge, remove the valve, make some improvements and changes that we've requested of them. The, the lion's share of that hundred thousand was really to, I'll say, pump wastewater around the bridge, around our force main and get it to where it could go to, uh, Orange County sanitation regional lines. Um, the contractor basically used every pumping truck in Southern California to do this. And in fact. He used all the trucks. He worked with a contractor to import eight additional trucks from Northern California. Took about two to three days to get those vehicles down to Southern California and stage them for the work that we proposed, uh, you know, back when we were doing that, that work. And what we noticed is they did fine during low flow, but shoulder, we started to realize that, hey, they're just keeping up. By the time that, we had about four or five locations where trucks were pulling up to a manhole, dipping their hose in, starting to suck out the wastewater. And then they would carry that wastewater across the bridge to a location by the fairgrounds and they would dump at that location. So as they pulled away, another truck would pull in its place. I don't know that it was the most efficient and maybe they hadn't practiced it, but. Um, I'd say it was pretty good because as soon as one pulled off, the next pulled in. And granted, let's say it takes two to five minutes to set up the pumper truck. Get the hose in. I think they were doing pretty well at keeping up. But what we noticed as we got closer to six or seven in the morning, six o'clock in the morning was, they're just managing to keep up with flow. The, the, the level wasn't dropping. Uh, and we hadn't even hit the high flow period of the day. So I started looking at the plan a little closer. And what I noticed is there's four or five locations that we pump out of. Each truck can pump, either five thousand gallon pumps can pump about two hundred gallons a minute. So that's about a thousand gallons a minute. In comparison, I'm gonna, I'm, I guess I'll say that our Eldon pump station pumps fifteen hundred during the peak quarter. Portion, quarter time portion of the day, uh, which is like noon to six P M. We pump of around sixteen hundred. So I'm going to say fifteen hundred to two thousand gallons a minute is coming out of, of that force main. So I have some concerns that logistically, are we going to really be able to, uh, get sewage in a long-term fashion? I think we can do it in a short-term fashion. I'll say a day or less. But can we manage to do it for a long-term fashion? I'll say two and three days. Next slide, please. Um, we do have an implementation plan that, that, uh, I'll answer some questions about. Right now, we're thinking that. Uh, because it's going to take three to five years, depending on a lot of things, funding and other things, um. What could we do in the short term? And so we were looking at options and one of the options was, we can implement, I'll say, temporary overland emergency pumping. Uh, and, and, and we can do that within a three to nine-month period, depending on how quickly we can mobilize and bid a project, uh, procure the equipment. Um, I don't know that we can do much better than, than say six months. I'll, I'll average it out. And part of that is because even to get the hoses and the equipment, there's probably, I'm going to say a four to six-month lead time once we let a contract. So six months is probably realistic. Nine months, um, is potentially doable once we proceed with the project. So the overland basically would, the overland emergency bypass, and I'm not talking about pumping trucks. It would be basically, we'd have to go in and modify the pumping over at our Eldon pump station. So there's two locations and I'll show you that where we would go in and, and upgrade the connections. We would need to, uh, prepare and, and, and stage new header pipes for temporary pipes to plug into. And then we do need to, uh, obtain and procure lay flat hose or I'll call it temporary pipings. And I'll explain what that is. And then longer term, as we've been discussing over the last several months, is basically implementing our long-term plan. And let's get redundant force mains in there. Uh, so that includes basically a new buried pipe, refurbishing an old techite pipe that, that, um, is in really bad shape and potentially can't be used because of how fragile it is. Uh, we do need, I am interested in looking at, uh, providing pipeline access, ways to assess the pipe, those kinds of things. And then we need to also reconfigure the connections at each of the ends. So it's a four or five-step, uh, project to get this implemented. Next slide, please. Um, just to give you a refresher, is our Eldon pump station is at the corner of Eldon on Mesa Drive. It's on the, the country club side of Mesa Drive. The existing force main, uh, travels north, northerly along Mesa Drive. Then it goes southerly on Newport Boulevard, uh, continues west to about the entrance of the fairgrounds. And there's a couple of manholes where we have pipes that go into gravity systems. And then there's a twenty-four inch gravity sewer that continues west to Fairview and then dumps into Orange County sanitation regional facility. Next slide, please. Um, let me talk a little bit about the short-term project that, that I'm proposing and, and we're discussing is this is. Our Eldon pump station is very large, very complicated. It's probably the most intricate station that we have. Basically, we have a force main that comes in from our Irvine pump station, which is down off of Irvine Drive and Mesa Drive. And right now we have it, a valve so that it discharges into the wet well of Eldon pump station. We do have an option to pump into a force main. Uh, then our pumps at Eldon pump into this green colored pipe, which is the Eldon force main. And then it goes all the way across to the, uh, between the, to the entrance of the fairground in front of the city hall area. And then let me point out that we also have a backup, uh, pump. It's an engine-driven pump. And should we lose power, should we somehow have a catastrophic failure of the pumping system? This engine-driven pump, it's a diesel-driven pump, it kicks on with a loss of power as an example. And then it takes wastewater from our wet well and then puts it through a twelve-inch force main, connects to the existing force, Eldon force main. And then sewage is, is, uh, pumped, uh, downstream to the point of discharge. This pump, thi- this station, the Eldon, the primary Eldon station pumps about four thousand gallons a minute. This backup pumps about twenty-five hundred gallons a minute. And what we find is that when we run that during the day, that pump barely keeps up with the, with the flow during the peak six-hour period of our day. Next slide, please. Um. Overland pumping, ignore the pumps because that's not what we're looking to do here. What, what we're interested in doing is using our existing pump station, since we have a primary pump station and a backup facility, is we want to use that. Uh, to basically pump into temporary piping. So what I'd like to focus on is this kind of a stuff. Uh, is basically, we'd have little pipes that go into a pipe and then that overland pipe goes to a point of discharge. Next slide, please. Again, flexible piping, laying on the ground in the roadway. Um, we could have valves, uh, definitely if there's a, a header or place where pipes would discharge or come out of. We would put valves so that staff could operate a temporary pumping station for two, three, four, five days, depending on the emergency repair or the activity that would need to be done. Um, down in this lower corner, you'll see several pumps pump into a header. We would do the same thing. We've have basically a twelve-inch pipe coming in from our primary station. We have a twelve-inch pipe. We would, would come in from our backup pump and then we would go into a header into the temporary force main. Next slide. This is, uh, we, I guess I'm calling this the emergency response trailer. And it's basically four pieces of twelve-inch flexible hose. It's referred to in the industry as lay flat hose. But it's basically like a garden hose that lays flat when it's not full. When you turn on the spigot, it, it basically, um, fills up with water and becomes a temporary pipeline. And each of these sections of reel has six hundred feet of pipeline. The trailer comes with an engine and a hydraulic unit to basically let this off and reel this back in. And we can deploy that, um, I even say it's, it's, it's very slow at installing, but you basically, you have people walking behind this unit. It's pulled by a truck and you deploy this in the street and, and hook it up as you go. Next slide, please. Just to give you an idea of the size of this unit, this is what we would be purchasing. Uh, one of the purchases would be three of these units. Um, it's probably about ten, twelve foot, ten foot tall, and it takes about six people to basically handle and deploy this piping. And that's with having this unit actually operate, deploy. So, uh, turn, rotate, uh, lay the, the, uh, the piping on the ground. But you still have to position it, do certain things. And that takes about six people, uh, to do that. And it lays flat until, like I said, it's, you turn on the spigot and then that thing fills up. So what we would be buying a- as part of this would be three, three of these trailers. They all have units to deploy the pipe and take up the pipe when you're, when you're completed with it. Um, but I think this method is faster than trying to. Um, but I think this method is faster than trying to use, say, uh, other types of flexible pipe, which need to be either glued together, welded together. Um, I was doing a project on the corner of Red Hill and Main Street up here near the airport. Uh, we had a force main break when I was at Orange County sanitation and I was having, uh, a vendor install some, some plastic pipe that needed to be welded together. And we had to get from the John Wayne Airport parking lot across Red Hill and into a gravity system. Um, and it took, we were at it two, three days and barely got, you know, that short distance installed. So it takes quite a bit of time to install temporary force mains. So that's why we're looking at putting something that can be, I don't want to say easily, but, uh, deployed, hooked up and tied into our system. Next slide, please. The biggest thing about any of this work is how much does it cost? And so as we do more work and make more and, and study more things, look at the temporary systems, the permanent systems. I guess I want to say right now, our range is finally settling to, into somewhere between 10 million and $14 million. I don't have hard numbers because I haven't spent a lot of time to, to really look at the detail. But as far as, uh, until we design the project, this number may or may not, uh, firm up. But I'm going to say our best guess right now is that we're going to spend about a million dollars for the emergency bypassing process and about 10.5 billion for the, I'll say redundant force main system that we're looking to employ. Um, in the million dollar bracket, this is pretty, this number's pretty firm. We are, uh, wastewater super tenant is, is looked at prices and he's gotten estimates of about quarter million dollars per trailer. We need three trailers to do what we need to do. And then we have about another quarter million dollars of station modifications to be able to bypass pump that station. Of course, the Eldon re- force main redundancy project, um, I'm going to tell you that this number is in this number. This is the overall for everything, but the lion's share of the money, but would be used to build the Eldon force main redundancy project. And I'm guessing right now, uh, that it would be between nine and 13 million. Our estimate is that a new pipeline would be about seven million. Uh, engineering would cost about a little less than 700,000. Uh, inspection and all the construction activities would be about 600,000. And because we don't know a lot of things of the project, for example, we're going to have to jack and bore or somehow get a pipeline under state route 55. We, that, there, there's some risk there, there's some things we don't know. And so right now we've added about a 30% contingency. So this number could come down as we prepare designs and learn of the details of what it takes to implement this project. Now I'm going to say that, uh, your general manager and I and others, we're looking at, uh, and looking for considering and pursuing state funding, uh, county of orange funding. We've been talking to our county supervisor. Um, they might be looking to see if there's any money available under the current budget to maybe help us proceed with the design. So those are talks that are on, ongoing and underway. Um, of course, we may have to talk about loans if we choose to move forward with this project. Another option is to sell bonds. And I guess I'm going to say that we're going to have to get our, our treasurer involved and, and to discuss what the options are and what is the best thing for us. But there's several funding options that, that we would be looking at should we move forward with this, um, what I think is a very important project. And next slide. I guess I'm going to say that, that we need somewhere between, uh, and this number may be meaningless, but between 1,500 gallons a minute and 2,000 gallons a minute needs to be able to get pumped. I'm not sure that we can manage that sustainably or reliably with truck pumping. So, uh, we're looking to do two things, a longer-term project, shorter-term project. Um, I'm going to say right now, we're thinking it's about, uh, uh, 10 and a half million dollars, 11 million dollars to do that work. Uh, and with that, I guess I'm ready for questions. Hopefully, uh, I've been clear, but that's, you know, trying to give you all the information, but it's very complicated when you start looking at the multiple components in, in this work and what we're proposing.
Got a question. Uh, have you checked with CSDA finance co- uh, committee?
Um, not.
Because they could give you an offer, you know?
Yes, not yet. Uh, uh, and chatting with, uh, your general manager, he is, he has mentioned that that's probably the most viable option for us. Uh, but I'd like to pursue at least, I mean, while that's in the cards and we can probably get a loan and make that happen. I'd like to see if we can get some money from the state of California or the county. I don't want to, I don't want to just say, let's go in that direction of getting a loan right away. But we are considering that and, uh, Scott has been explaining to me how that works. So yes, that is, that is in our arsenal of weapons.
So, you know, if I can help you in any way, I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, if I read correctly, so the first project, the roughly million, million and a half, somewhere in that ballpark, uh, that we're, we're planning on, we're trying to get in the next six to nine months. Is that correct?
Yes, once we, um, come back to you for actions, which prob- likely will happen either late this month or in December, depending on, um, budget availability and other things. Um, all we're, we're, Scott and I are looking at the capital outlay budget and we're trying to make this fit in without, I say dipping into our, um, pool of money, our reserves for capital outlay. Uh, we're having to take a serious look at project priorities. Fortunately, we were able to get a, a lot of, I'll say rehab rehabilitation and replacement work done in the last couple of years, which, uh, makes this part being absorbed into the, this current year's budget possible. So as soon as I'm done doing that analysis and reviewing it with our finance manager and with our general manager, uh, I think we could make this fit in and I'll bring in some recommendations and, and, and to you either like I said, um, end of November or the, or the December board meeting, but I'm shooting for the end of this month.
And then obviously the big ticket item, uh, you know, we've got, what would, so six, nine, in a perfect world that we'd get some funding and buy all that stuff. Timeframe on the, the, uh, redundancy, what, what are, what's ideal timeframe to get that up and running?
I'm going to say three years, three and a half years, depending on many factors. Um, if it, I'm going to say it's going to be between 12 and four, uh, 10 and 14 months. So I'll say a year to design it. And we're in the process right now of soliciting proposals to design a project. The reason why we moved forward with that is, is we are also looking at, can we fund the design of that redundancy project? Good thing about proceeding with design is, and I didn't mention this, by having a little bit of outlay here, and I know a million doesn't seem, it seems like a pretty big number, but compared to $10 million, it's a small, much, it's 10%. And then another 800 for the designs, it gets us a shovel-ready project, which shows the state of California and the county. We're ready to go. It means we're business, we, we mean business and, and that, that's helpful. But that being said, it, as we design the project, particularly the part under the state route 55, by designing and looking into those details, working in detail with Caltrans and the city of Costa Mesa, we are going to le- eliminate the risk and the uncertainties assorted with that portion. And so we will be able to firm up this number right here by spending, I'll say, you know, 800,000, I'll, I'll, I'll estimate for right now. Uh, we get a lot smarter and we can next fiscal year come back and budget money and really talk seriously about financing and how to pay for this longer-term project.
Uh, and then I know none of us, including you, can't predict the next natural disaster, but scaled one to 10, I mean, what's our current potential risk of all heck breaking loose? And, and then just day-to-day blah, 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 stuff happening. What is project one? How does that decrease that risk hopefully? Obviously we do both, it's like yay, but just doing project one right now, what are we talking about? You know, risk-wise.
I, I, I'm, I, I'm not, I'm not good at predicting when an earthquake's going to happen or when a, someone like Edison is going to put a pipe or throw a, a power pole through our pipeline. Uh, and I would think that our force main is probably not as vulnerable as a gravity sewer because, you know, we, we tend to have those located a lot more accurately, I'm going to say. But that being said, I can't predict that. But what I, what I will pro- say is that if, if we do have a pipe break or, um, or some other type of a break, the water board is really going to look at penalizing us because they're going to want to say, hey, we could charge you up to a dollar a gallon. And I've heard numbers as high as $10 a gallon, but let's say it's a dollar a gallon. When we put out $2 million, uh, 2 million gallons worth of wastewater, uh, a, a day out of that facility, that's 2 million, 2 million dollars a day of risk. Uh, if we have a major outage or some type of a major damage or major break of, it could be three to five days. Do the math. What I'm trying to do is look at, by spending a million dollars, we may stave off, you know, 6 million, 5 million, 10 million in damages. What's that worth and what's the risk and, and how do we handle that kind of thing? The other thing is, uh, if we were to have, I'm not saying we're going to have it, but if we were to have a large break, then people like the water board, they're going to send engineers in to really tear us this place apart. They're going to look at what is our plan? Did we have things ready to go? All of this stuff. And if they find in little chinks in our armor, next thing you know, they're going to say, oh, see, you didn't plan. You didn't have these things. So when Scott and I started talking about this risk, we thought this is probably the biggest thing we have, uh, to, to consider right now. And so that's why we're bringing this forward. Uh, we're bringing it in out of, out of budget, I guess. We're bringing it to you because we think it's urgent enough, at least to talk to you about it. And, but when this is going to happen, I don't know as far as when we're going to have that whatever.
And then so the, if I understand correctly, the project one, the emergency bypass, that will at least get us ready that if something happens, whatever that may be, it's like, we can decrease the time of, oh crud.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then project number two is like redundancy and all sort, that's going to protect us long-term and all that.
Yes, that's what we're looking at. That's our, what we're considering right now. And again, as we move forward with the project and start to ask for approvals, we're going to dive into the lot more detail and be bringing back more information to this board. Today, we're not asking for any authority to, to budget or anything like that. We just want to have a discussion with you.
So I think at least in terms of my standpoint, I mean, project one, we gotta, we gotta get rolling. But along with that, so maybe the next time you bring this back, maybe we can have treasurer, we could look at funding on like what's real, what's like, hey, if I ask Santa for a Christmas present, what that, what's real and what's a Christmas wish list in terms of funding for this stuff? If we get some options, you know?
We can certainly, when it's appropriate and then when it's timely, we will bring that back. Uh, and, and, uh, our treasurer tends to, to, uh, attend the board meetings, either virtually or in person. So Scott and I can chat with him and our finance manager and firm that up before we come back. And that way he can answer any questions or, or Caitlin can answer any questions, uh, on financing. But realistically, uh, the, the, getting a loan through, through, um,
CSDA.
CSDA is, is very realistic, very, lot of potential. I just don't want to make that our first option, I, if we can get some other funding available. And I think paying this off over a 10, 20, 30-year period makes a lot of sense for our agency. And it's a good investment, I think. And the water board looks favorably on, on, on this type of a, a, an approach.
And it's kind of a state issue and concern, right? They should be helping us help everyone. So awesome. Thanks, Mark.
My, my suggestion with CSDA was just the idea to get, uh, uh, some kind of comment from them of what it would be like, not to, you know, necessary with the minute you knock on the door, you've got to admit that you're doing something. You just have to compare it with whatever else you're doing.
Yes, yeah, thank you. We'll, we'll make that happen.
Mike? Oh, maybe we should buy some Powerball tickets to see if we could.
How much, how much money would you like me to go out and spend on Powerball?
And I, I'm sorry for being flippant, but geez, $1.9 billion would have paid for a whole lot of stuff, wouldn't it? Um, I just thinking about this redundancy program. Eldon is obviously, and has always been our biggest.
Yeah.
That's the top of the pyramid for us. I mean, that's the one we've continually focused on, which is rightfully so. Are there any other pump stations that we potentially could be looking at doing some of this with? I, I don't, I don't know about, uh, re- Republic. I mean, that's all brand new, but it's a pretty sensitive area that it services, right? So going 30 years out for the sanitary district, are we going to be doing this with others?
Yes, uh, one of the first things that I noticed when I came to work here, worked for you and, and our general manager, was that every one of our pump stations had one discharge pipeline. Uh, so one of the first things I did is chat with our general manager about, we need to really look at, at, at moving more towards a dual force main. Uh, that's what, you know, most of the agencies do. Like I said, Orange County sanitation, they were able to switch force mains. I know that Irvine Ranch is another example. They had a big spill, uh, on Pacific Coast Highway back about 10, 12 years ago. Again, single point of failure. So now they've gone back and implemented dual approach, uh, and that's what agencies are doing. And so Scott agreed. And so for the, um, Iowa pump station and the 19th Street pump station, as part of those designs, we added a second pipeline. Raised up the price a little bit, but yes, uh, we did that on those two projects. Geesler pump station, which we just completed the design on, but we're going to put it on a shelf because of some higher priorities. One of this, this project is one of them. Um, we're right, we're got a shovel-ready project, Geesler, but it's a double dual force main as well. So we're, we are implementing this. And so I think within the next 10 to 15 years, as we do work on our pump stations, we'll be able to add the second force main. I haven't looked at an entire, from a programmatic perspective, the timing, but it looks like we're, we will be, you know, over the next 10, 15, 20 years, doing work to all of our pump stations.
Okay, I, it, obviously, um, I'm sensitive to the one in California street.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but that's adjacent or isn't it tied into an OC SAN? I mean, that's.
Essentially it is.
Okay.
But, but doesn't matter. Let's say, uh, Edison comes out and does something or a gas company trenches or who knows what. Um, you know, with one pipe, it's, it's, you're out of, out of luck.
It's funny, I, I had mentioned over several meetings, when they repaved or slurried or whatever they call it in, in my neighborhood, you know, and they cover over every manhole. I mean, they cover, it's like a blanket over everything.
Mm-hmm.
And I was just sitting there thinking that if, if they did, and it, it was that way for a week or two before they were able to redo them, you know, extend the, I can't imagine if we had a situation where the city paved over everything and we had a break. I mean, it, it, it just seems like that would add to our frustration and probably our fines.
It would, but let, let's, you said that they were out of certain, I'll just using Californian or the state streets as an example. They were out, they were covered over for about a week. But I'm going to say it's only a week out of the life cycle of that project. And what's the risk of something happening right when that occurs? Again, we got to manage risk because I don't, we don't have unlimited funding. But secondly, we know where those force, the manholes are. We'll get with a jackhammer, we can get to it in a matter of less than an hour.
The marks are still on my sidewalk pointing to where they're, I mean, that, they do that. The guy came out and painted little indicators. So I, I know there's some safeguards to this, but anything that happens to delay what needs to be done to keep this stuff flowing, we need to be proactive with as far as I'm.
I agree. Uh, and I will say to give you some assurance, other than Eldon, most of our stations, we can get our vector out to start. In fact, we're going to have three vectors pretty soon. We're going to be able to get them out to start removing wastewater from the sumps. If for some reason we have a problem with the pump stations. In the meantime, we have an emergency plan that includes getting private pumping trucks over. And so it's a lot easier with a smaller station. This is our largest station. So, so we don't have the same amount of exposure, in my opinion, with some of these other stations that we do, that we do with this, this one.
Including the one down on Irvine?
That one's got, we got quite a bit of risk and we do, that's probably after this project. That's the next one I'm going to be looking at, but.
Okay.
Let's get past. That's the next one I'm gonna be looking at. But let's get past this big project.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I mean, we spent a lot of time and energy and money when we put the, that was it, Scott, the generator at Irvine? I mean, that, that seemed like it was a huge. But this is the more important. I, I wholeheartedly agree with, with the approach that this one is number one priority.
Yeah, and I'll say that because that Irvine station is smaller, the, the equipment that we buy for the emergency bypass can be used for that station. Now, I don't know if we need more, but, um, you know, I haven't looked that far.
It's fine.
But, but yeah, it's, it's something that we do, we'll have more capabilities for our agency once we do project number one.
Thanks, thanks, Mark.
Mark, uh, the station modifications, will they be um, of any importance when we do the, when we do the big project?
Um, I, I don't, when you say importance, I, I.
I mean.
Yeah, I think they, the contractor, depending on how a contractor approaches our design, how the consultant that we need to hire designs the project and how they're gonna implement it during construction or how their vision of implementing during construction. I think the twelve-inch connections to our force main would be useful. I think it's just something else that could drive our costs down if the contractor needed to do some temporary pumping or, or get into the thing or do whatever it is they need to do.
Yeah, you and I have seen many projects where temporary pumping is needed. Uh, and so the, that, that equipment and whatnot, uh, could, could find many different uses even during the large project.
Yeah, yes, potentially. Um, in fact, I, I don't know if we wanna make it available to a contractor, but I guess we could if we wanna drive any potential pumping costs down. I will say, putting a lay-flat hose up Mesa Drive, across the Mesa Bridge and across Newport Boulevard is a big, big, big deal. Now, uh, if we were to use it, uh, during, uh, construction, it would have to be a major thing and we'd have to coordinate with Caltrans and the city because there'd be a big disruption in traffic.
Okay, I mean, you can make those kinds of choices as you do your evaluation.
Yes.
Our fee increases, you, when, when you originally started to do this project, they were half as much as this.
Oh, yeah.
But the fee, the fees that, that this board approved had a five-million-dollar um, cost in for this project. So those, so that money will be in, in your, in, in sanitary district coffers within two years.
I believe, I believe so. I don't remember the exact number.
Sorry about that. Yeah, yeah. I, I, I think that it was you estimated at that time, it was either five or more million, based on whatever contingency you were doing back then. And maybe that included that. But anyway, there are, there is some funds, half, probably over half of what you have estimated the project to cost now um, in, in this present fee increase.
Yes, I agree. There's money in the fee. I just don't recall how much and when that outlay occurs. And one of the things that I'm trying to balance is we have a, a policy or we have a, a board mandate that says we don't want our capital outlay reserves to drop below five million dollars. So even though money in and money out, and there's this pool that expands and contracts depending on, on the project, I need to work with other constraints. And, and before we dip down below that number, for example, this year, we were planning two million of outlay for each of the five-year rate period. That's what I based, and that's what I gave the rate consultant and our man, finance manager. But realistically, the increase that, that we, the board approved and that we had recommended, it had like, uh, that first year really wasn't two million. We were looking to maybe use float. Well, when we realized what, how much money we were getting in with the rate increase, we actually decreased the outlay this particular year because we didn't wanna impact that five-million-dollar pool that we wanna maintain. So there's always little balancing acts that are going on.
I know. I, and, and, and there's probably no way having just one engineer on board could spend that money fast enough. Uh, anyway.
I'll try.
Well, no, I, I, I appreciate your, your thinking along the lines. That five million dollars was in there to dip down into if we had a plan, you know, to refund it.
Yes.
So that five million dollars is not a, that, that, that's only sacred in that that's a goal.
Yes.
In our policies, uh, we could dip into that five million dollars if, if we so chose, choose to do. Anyway.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. I just, I'm not prepared to recommend how we finance, what we dip into, what exceptions do we make at this time? I guess I'm trying to just share with you information.
I agree.
Risks and talk about all of this. So as we move forward in the next couple or three months, you know, we're, we're all on the same, I'll say, playing field.
Yep. No, I, I, I appreciate what you've done so far. Uh, good luck.
Thank you.
I have a comment. Uh, first of all, I thought you did a great presentation at a level that we could understand and, or some of us could. And, uh, I just wanted to know that you're taking into consideration that come January, you might have to go back and educate some of these higher-ups that you're trying to get money from or loans or anything because there's a change, you know, because of the election. So you have to take that into consideration. January changes a lot of this and it could slow things down some, but you know, just to know.
Absolutely. And that's why, as we move forward, we'll look at, at the various options. I, the loan option is a very good one. And if we do get state funding, we could then use those funds to help pay back some of the loans a little quicker.
Do any of the directors have any?
Are you proposing this budget request to come back at the board meeting this month for the million dollars?
Uh, yes, I, I, well, right now, my plan is to bring, if I get everything completed and, and submitted for, for review, our plan is to bring, uh, budget items back at the end of this month. I realistically, the next step would be, what do we do with design? So later this month, I will be receiving, well, our, um, clerk of the board will be receiving proposals from consultants for designing this project. That is scheduled to come back to this board for review and approval and consideration in January. So we are taking, I'll say, steps, but, so hopefully in November or December, we'll bring money, uh, budget items back to you. And then, uh, realistic steps to award the design in January. And hopefully either December or January, should we decide to move forward with this emergency bypass work, we can award that in the next, say, December, January timeframe as well.
Good.
Um, one last, one last question or input for me. You mentioned earthquakes are, are a, a potential concern. If a significant enough earthquake occurs that our force mains break, there won't be any water coming into the, into, into, into the pump stations, uh, because of the, the Mesa infrastructure. The fragile nature, fragile nature of the Mesa infrastructure. And once those lines separate, then they have to be repaired. Um, once our sewer lines separate, historically sewage finds its way, but there won't, there won't be any water. There won't, there, there won't be any water available. I mean, there'll be significantly less water coming to these pump stations and to the residents if earthquake is what causes, uh, our force main to break. Anyway.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions?
Mr. President.
Not going to item numbers.
Mr. President.
Alan Burns. Consider adopting resolution, authorizing remote meetings.
We approve resolution twenty, twenty-two-dash-nine-seventy-four.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we're going to, you passage unanimously, uh, going to oral communications and.
Alan, you're on mute.
I have a, a discussion item.
Mr. President.
Scott about it earlier that I was gonna present it, the, the U.S. flag box that we have.
I don't think I can hear.
Right now. We, I've been approached by Dan, we're the former director of the sanitary district, and he wants to take that project.
Thank you.
And, uh, put it at the library, in Mesa Verde Library upfront with our name on it, uh, that we're proposing this and let him take that. He already took all the flags we have in storage. He already took care of those, but he'd like to take this project on and work with it. And he's asking if we would consider giving it to him or he would consider even buying it if he had to. But I think it's a good project to have because we're not doing it now and he's gonna take over the responsibilities of the flags. So I wanted to bring that to the attention of the other board members for consideration.
Yeah, I think, I've, I've talked to the librarian about that and she hasn't talked to OCPL, but I think it's a, I think Dan doing that would be a plus for the community.
Well, he had mentioned to me that he wants to buy the box, so I don't know.
I, it's, it's, I'll check with finance, but it's a couple thousand dollars. So, but I mean, if we want to give it to him, I think I need more to action, donate it to him so I can bring it back for that and.
Could you put that on, uh, ma- maybe the agenda for discussion, I mean, for approval on the next week?
November.
I mean, and then we'll see how the directors feel.
Well, I think, I think the criteria is whether it's a gift of public funds.
It would still be ours. It would just be at that location.
Oh, I, well, that's an altern, yeah, that's an alternative. Yeah, that's an alternative I hadn't thought of.
I mean, that's what he's considering, but he said if he had to, he would consider buying it. But if we can just move the location from here to there and still have a problem with the.
I wanna discuss that at the next meeting.
Yes.
Any other oral communications or director's comments? Not, I thank you very much for your diligence and this meeting is adjourned.
Do diligence.
Do diligence.
That's not raining.